Hello, everybody. Welcome to the town council meeting. We're going to start off with a different way. We're going to go into executive session to discuss management, litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege. So I will take motion to go into the first session.
So move.
It is a motion to adopt this agenda resolution to go into the first session.
So move. Second?
Second.
Is it all in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not favoring any extensions? Thank you, folks. This time we have a turn briefly.
Things are coming. I think it's arrival.
Good evening, again, folks. Good to see you. Sorry about the change in plan. We went into executive discussion first. As a result, it's pushed things back a little bit. So we're going to do the workshop from seven thirty to eight, and we're going to start the regular meeting at eight o'clock this way. We can have a full workshop, and we can hear any resident requests and presentations. So with that, we're out of the formal workshop, and we usually start off with scheduling matters. Does anybody have any scheduling matters?
Mr. Mayor, if you could just read that on the mayor's statement.
Oh, sorry. Notice this meeting has been provided according to the Hilton Public Meanings Act, posting a copy of the agenda on the Fulton Worth of Municipal Complex, filing a copy of the agenda in the office of the Township Clerk at the Municipal Complex, forwarding a copy of the agenda to the Bone Can Times and Carrier Post, requiring witnesses to each person who has requested copies of the regular meetings schedule. All of the above posted filings and mailings are taken place from the third day of October twenty fourth. Now we'll go into our workshop.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item, or the only item to talk about today, is a follow-up to a residence we need to discuss.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to see if you can amend the agenda tonight real quick. We've been talking about our surplus, what we've been doing for surplus, and talking about having residents come in and give us ideas about surplus. I don't know if anyone remembers. Hopefully, you all do. When the liquor referendum went on, on the ballot, pressed the vote on, it was all about tax relief. And every single piece of literature I have here is all about tax relief. So I'd like to propose tonight, we have a resolution tonight, that we use our surplus for just that, tax relief, for our surplus. That's what our, that would be what our surplus is used for.
Okay. Can we discuss that now, or is that something we can discuss? I'm fine with that concept. Do you want to understand?
I'm fine. If I could, if I could just clarify that, what you're saying is it has to be, or if it's needed to be?
That surplus should be used for tax relief. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be used to sit here and say, we need to go build this, we need to do that. If it's going to give my residents tax relief, that's what it should be used for.
If we use it. Right, so we don't have to use it every year.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying it's intended over here. I'll say that checks, they need to be used for tax relief. We don't have to tax relief, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm part of that concept. I think using it as tax relief benefits everybody, not just a few people. But I definitely agree with that concept.
I mean, it was quite clear that that's what the citizens voted on. I mean, you got every mailer for property tax relief from Moorestown, was pushing the liquor referendum. And I think to most people, you talked about it, I was looking forward to, for tax relief, for our surplus.
I support that space. I, I think that's a great idea. It's, you know, it's one thing to say you want to do it, it's a much harder thing to get up there and actually do it, you're up in here. And I, I think it's a great tool for us to use, the property tax relief, and I would like to see it. See that resolution?
So I was, I was wondering that last night. So it's kind of how we go about beginning.
Are we commenting on that right now, with the deputy mayor?
It's like it's starting to say how you should...
Proceed, Julie.
You seem a little commited, I'd like to comment as well.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I, I believe, as I said, November twenty-second of two thousand twelve, I believe it was good to have town hall meetings where people from the town discussed various things, such as the use of the surplus, which is primarily from the liquor money, the money that we got by having fine dining in the Moorestown Mall and that area, so that we get all of the ideas from the smart people in town. So I, I would say that it's a wonderful thing to do it for tax relief, but I believe we should include the town and the townspeople in that decision. So I, I would not say that we should kind of bifurcate this in some manner, but just get as much information as we can before we make a decision like this.
Great, thank you.
So I have a procedure, it's not how to be...
Well, council wishes to, since I can verbally adopt a resolution, we can authorize a resubmission. When we do that, do we do that now, or do we do that during the regular meeting?
I would recommend under the regular meeting. Do you have a consent, kind of, a motion to amend the consent agenda to ask the resolution, very, very close to the end of the day?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have a, an agenda? I know, or should we move to our workshop items? Start with the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I started to say, the last council meeting, we had a resident that brought up a test result that was in our water quality report, was published last March. There is a health compound that's unregulated by the EPA and the New Jersey DEP that we had a reading that was, it's really hard to say where that reading was, because it's an unregulated compound. There is no MCL, maximum containment level, that either DEP or the EPA have. Prior to that meeting, prior to it becoming a discussion, council, Butler, our utility superintendent, has been working with Reverend King Merrick, our, our utility engineer, as well as DEP, to address this reading. And Mr. Butler's been going back and forth with DEP. Not to get too deep into the weeds in this, Mr. Dross and I joined the discussion today. And as a result, and just out of an abundance of caution, we have closed well seven and nine at the North Church Street Water Treatment Plant in order to further evaluate and treat that plant. That was the only water source that we had that had levels of this PCP one-two-three. There were no levels found with the Kings Highway Treatment Plant, or the water we purchased from New Jersey American Water, which we have enough water from those two sources to get us by for the time being. So, Tony, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think just kind of, the discussion that we had earlier today, Scott, by the way, with DEP.
Correct.
We've been working with DEP and the federal government for decades in assessing and monitoring what are considered unregulated contaminants in drinking water supplies. And in May two thousand twelve, the township was told by EPA and DEP to begin testing for a number of these types of things, which they do periodically. At the time, the township had the option of sampling over a twelve-month time period that would begin in January thirteen through sometime December of two thousand fifteen. Township began sampling right away in first quarter of two thousand thirteen. First year, we had the opportunity to obtain a sample from the North Church Street Water Plant where this contaminant, OCP, was detected. There is no established maximum level for the presence of TCP in drinking water supply. That's really important for the public to know. It's something that DEP and the federal government are looking into, but there has been no maximum level for the presence of this TCP in drinking water supplies established in New Jersey. And no one at either federal or state level of government has ordered the township to take any action in respect to the treatment of TCP in our drinking water supplies. We have nevertheless worked with DEP for some time, past few months, in following through on their offer of public assistance in the way of financing to help further evaluate drinking water supply, and perhaps to provide us with some treatment technologies to deal with the issue. We replied for those public funds, and that application is complete to our knowledge, and moving along with DEP, we hope to have a decision on that very shortly. In the meantime, DEP has recommended, that's all they can do, but recommended it would shut off the drinking water wells at North Church Street Water Treatment Plant. We've done that. And DEP confirmed that recommendation with us this morning in a conference call that Scott and I had with DEP. We're complying with the recommendation, which is what it is. We do that out of an abundance of caution, which is how we treat the township's drinking water supply. And that's consistent with our practice forever, to take all appropriate steps to safeguard the township's drinking water, even when TCP is not something that's formally regulated by the EPA or the EPA. We are going to take immediate action to implement whatever treatment technologies are best to help remove TCP from the township's drinking water. We're going to do that for the same reason. DEP has told us that long-term exposure to TCP is a concern, but we're not going to wait to take action to stay ahead of issue. So that's how we're going to deal with this public health issue. And as of today, the only source of concern related to this is offline, everything.
Okay, council, you have any questions regarding that?
Well, there was, I think, some, I want to say accusations or explanations that, you know, people have been telling around town, that council has not, the council has not taken any action on that. And we started this, I believe, eight, over eighteen months ago, started testing.
Correct.
Is that correct? And we weren't supposed to start, we didn't have to start the testing until this year.
Actually, the test, the testing did not, does not have to be completed until the end of next year.
Yeah, so, so this is to say that we, and Bill Butler, who is our, our, what are extraordinary, he, he, along with council and Scott, took the proactive measures to get this under control and find out what the deal is. So I, I just, I want to make sure that's clear, that this is something that we will proactive on. It's not something that's been lying out there. We just found out about it last week.
No, we definitely were proactive about it. You know, we started sampling well before we had to. You know, the EPA doesn't only have any, any real guidelines about this shit. And we're going to implement corrective measures. My family consumes the water, and it's pretty safe. And this is just one of those things that we're going to deal with, do with best for the residents, and that's it. And we're not going to fall into the hype of the scare tactics, and, you know, that might be employed on something like this, you know, do what's right for town, and do whatever, do whatever you can, our power. It's difficult, because while the EPA on the one hand says, do this, do that, they don't give you any guidance as to what to do. And if we take action without being to form a standard and let's say, then we risk doing too much or not doing enough. So it's, it's difficult, it's a difficult area to, to handle.
Testing, we did testing. It was tested once a year, five annual, what is the testing supposed to be?
It's supposed to be a twelve-month, however.
So, so you, twice a year, basically?
How often during the twelve months? I'm not exactly sure.
Bill has done whatever.
Quite understandably, because we talked to Bill, he did it quarterly, which was not what we were supposed to do. We were supposed to do it twice a year, and so he said every four.
Okay, and when you say that, you mean he's doing more than...
That's what I mean, he's actually doing even more to make sure that we're on top of this.
No, in my understanding is that the only state in our country that has actually enunciated guidelines is Hawaii, and our water is fifteen times, tested fifteen times lower than their, their standards.
Than their guideline?
Yes, than their guideline, so I completely agree with her, it's safe, and I'm glad we're being proactive about this.
Now, are we going to, I am definitely working very closely with DEP moving forward, get birth guidelines, remediation guidelines?
Bill, Bill's continuing to evaluate treatment options with Reverend King Merrick or our, our work through utility engineers. DEP has agreed to work with us, not only to find the best way to deal with the situation, but also potential funding to deal with the situation. So, and they're appreciative of the township being proactiveness, because it's not a quality they find a lot with their public works.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I have. Oh, we have a, a party, we have our perpetual outstanding appointments.
Just, I provide council with a memo on outstanding appointments, if you want to, especially related to the fact that we've added two additional members to the Federation Advisory Committee, if you will, just take a look at the list and any recommendations that you want.
Will do. As always, thank you, Pastor.
While we're on the subject, could I address part of that?
Of course, go.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could look into a way to advertise for a different members of folks, as we've discussed a couple of times before. I believe Mayor Sander actually had suggested this at one time. Also, if we could, in early November, say, look at the way we do appointments as regard, as regards to getting recommendations from either the committee or the chairs for appointments for people who had maybe knowledge in a specific area that, area they have. I just bring that up for discussion, no action here.
Thank you, Greg. Good points. Okay, moving past that, folks, your resident request and presentation. You are a resident, you have a request for a presentation. Please come forth, state your name and your address for the record.
Dolores Wolfram, June twenty, North Ramon, Moorestown. Can you give an update on the two properties that are on the corner of Camden and Javado? Apartments are going to be built on one side, and we haven't heard anything since. Did the person back out, or what is going on with that property?
No, Dolores, I talked to one of the partners actually this morning. They have not backed out, they still would like to keep the project. Right now, they're, they are debating which, which different avenues they can deal with a zoning issue, that deals with the density. So the same thing that we talked about at their town hall meetings, but they're just trying to figure out the best strategy for them to get through the permitting process with zoning.
I think they want too many apartments there, but they want a profit, so that's why we want, I suppose, a twenty or thirty or something like that, but...
Right. It's, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head how many units they, they want there, but it was more because since they were planning on building green space on one side, and all the apartments on the other, that the, the density level on the side of the apartment is a little bit high. So they are looking for relief, they just don't know if they're going to go for variance or what, what avenue they're going to take.
I just wondered.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mark Heinz, one thirty, Hertzboro Road. Question for, for Mr. Carew and council, just an update about the private station trash sanitation, just kind of how it's been going, because it's been about, it's like we're in the seventh month now. And a couple of observations I've seen just recently, is I've seen the Castworth trucks in town still like ten, fifteen in the evening in Moorestown. It just seems a little unusual. I assume that they're still doing the trash pickup, and still doing the same amount of cost to us. But I also observed that they're actually in town very early in the morning, too. Last week, they were picking up trash at six-ten in the morning, and I think the contract says they can't start until seven AM.
Yeah, and I don't have a, no worries, Mark, but you are right, there is a starting and, and I believe an ending time in the, in the contract. I have not heard complaints recently from any residents. I, I can follow up with the work to see if they've received, but I, I usually get those.
Right, so I, I have no complaints myself with my service, but I think in discussions a few months ago, that as we had our own sanitation crew, they usually were completed by three-thirty, fourteen AM. Well, this crew is now operating late in the afternoon, evening, and is there any concern? It seems like they're in town for twelve hours or more days.
I, I'm personally not any concerned with that, because the reason that our guys were done early, it was, there was contractual limitations in terms of their work hours. Because it's a private sector company, they have the ability to work the guys, whatever it may be, that's between Castworth and their employees, so long as they're not raising any contactable obligation with us in terms of time frame. Whereas when our guys were picking up the, the trash, they, it was never scheduled where it would possibly go on that long within the day, under normal circumstances, because you don't want to run into an overtime situation. And I think that that's probably why you had the economies of scale there, is because Castworth was putting fewer people on the job, taking a longer portion of the day, where we had more people on the job doing it. You know, we, we, we had the guys done when we were doing it, sometimes one o'clock, two o'clock.
Well, they're contracted, they have a certain cost, so I don't understand.
Sure, but we'll find out.
No, it's, there doesn't seem to be any in town in a long time now.
We'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I have a ready to take, we'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Nancy Newcomer, two thirty-five Fellowship Road. I'm rising to speak about something that was not previously on the agenda until the workshop, when you all discussed the idea of the surplus and took it off the table for the public to have any input in the discussion. I believe they call that in a game of bridge of finesse. I would respectfully request that you reconsider that decision. It makes it appear that you really don't want to hear from the public of Moorestown, from the citizens of Moorestown, regardless of what they might propose, whether it would be to save the money, to put it aside for tax, I'm not sure what the word, tax abatement, or to perhaps earmark some worthy priorities and projects that we could do with a portion of that money. I would respectfully ask you to take a step back from the decision you made to put it on the consent agenda, which totally removes it from public discussion. I would ask that you consider raising it at the next township meeting. To, to put it on the consent agenda for tonight's meeting is a fait accompli, and frankly, I think we deserve a little better than that. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy Newcomer. I'd like to address, I, I completely agree, people should have the ability to say something, and they do. How many workshops do we have with our budget?
Well, you've already earmarked it.
Five this year. Five this year. And the best come, they're the only, the best, who else?
Barbara Ritchie's.
Barbara Ritchie's to come. Mr. Boyell was there every once in a while.
Greg came before you, so it's a great question.
And maybe one other person. So there is ample opportunity for people to come and tell us what they'd like to do.
Well, I'm telling you right now, I'd like to have a public discussion of it.
We have, we've had a public discussion for a year. You can come to our resident request presentation and say, you'd like to do something. That's, that's it.
Well, if you, if you earmark it in a certain way, that won't be possible, not a deputy mayor.
I'm actually, the bottom line is, it's something that, like I said, this is, this is, this is what we worked, this is what we voted on. It is all the pieces of mail that we received, and it was all promised in tax relief, so that's why I'm proposing that we use it for tax relief.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to say a couple of things, irrespective of, and Nancy, you brought this up, I'll speak about it, we're going to speak about it tonight, actually, but irrespective of whatever mail you receive, Stacy, I have been told by several different people that when that conversation was going on in regards to the townwide decision about this money, part of that conversation was, in fact, to use it, try to use it, and discuss using it for sustainable uses, which I gave an example of in the last meeting, but frankly, what my example is only one thing. I believe that people in Moorestown are very smart, and I believe Nancy has actually a point.
We can go home together tonight.
The other point, the other point, water quality. If we spend this money, do you have nothing in the, in the bank to call us?
There's, there's the difference, thank you, Stacy, and thank you for reminding me. There's a difference between the action of council, whether it be to reduce the triple-A rating, spend the money and so forth, and discussion by those in the town. Discussion by citizens in the town, who are very smart, as I've said, would inform the council of those items that could be...
I was just thinking, you had six, eight, nine.
May I finish, Mrs. Mayor? Or is, is, is Deputy Mayor? May I finish, please? I'd like to finish. The people informing us for a meeting, which was called for that purpose, as a town hall meeting, which we have done in the past, for instance, for choir park, which is now, was part of Road Park first, where we had four separate meetings, which were town hall meetings. For this building, in which we had a meeting, for the recreation building, for several kinds of meetings, which we called for that purpose, would probably be attended by good-hearted people in the town. This does not mean to me that we would not use that kind of money for any other purpose than maybe reduction of taxes, but it does not then preclude the idea that we wouldn't go out and talk to the smart people in town. I believe that is a valuable thing.
It's my commitment, Mr. Mayor, because at the last meeting, perhaps I, I focused too much on one facet of this issue, which is the argument, and perhaps it's a bit from my voice from Mr. Newcomer, that the financial strategy on dealing with surplus, which Mr. Michelle and I have strongly recommended over the last few budget cycles since the liquor referendum passed, that, that Mr. Newcomer's suggestion was an attack on that. But the other side of this issue is this narrative, that quite frankly, was pushed further along by the Borough County Times, that, that it's actually not an issue of what we do the money, but of an issue of the public's level of involvement. The fact of the matter is, we've had over fifteen budget workshops since that liquor referendum passed. Fifteen, and this has not come up once. So it's, it's, it's a little unfair to say that me, or, 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 or as a council, Mr. Michelle, do not want public involvement. In fact, we actually took the step this year to change the times and the locations, trying to get more public involvement with our budget workshops. So the narrative, and Greg, I'm not saying you're the one pushing this, but the narrative that, that, that there, the people at this table, other than yourself, don't want public involvement, is just wrong, false.
And it's not, it's not...
I didn't say that, by the way.
And I, and I said, I don't think it...
And I will point out, Mr. Manager, that I have spoken to you and taken the time to go to your office to tell you that there was not anything that related to your professionalism that I brought this up.
I understood. That's why, that's why I reviewed it.
I would say, although I don't know if the Roseland town has time, but it's, at the end of the day, it's not liquor money or this money, it's, it's residents, it's taxpayers. It's going to, it's going to be used to benefit the taxpayers. Sir?
Hi, Mike Adams, Bureau of State and Customs Attorney. I agree with Greg Newcomer, the people of Moorestown are very smart. I'm exceptionally smart myself, and I can figure out what to do with my money better than all, so, your turn. Thank you.
If Mr. Michelle is here, I'll tell him where I should check, Greg.
If Mr. Michelle is here, I'll tell him to write you a check, Greg.
Sir.
It is. It will make 2019, Paragon. Two things. First, what kind of came up tonight? Speaking on the subject of the surplus, I submit that the best way to keep the surplus is to assume there is no surplus. If either one of the two ideas expressed today were implemented, it'd be a gigantic sigh of relief on the met, on being part of the five members of council. Well, I could coach now. I got six and a half million dollar bag stuff. Why why work hard? The other, hey, leave it up to we, the people. And why did we vote you guys in? So this is your job through us, but it is your job. Second reason I'm here, that's why I'm here, is that if I were physically handicapped, which I'm not so far, in a emergency tonight, I would be very fearful for my life in that kind of emergency. I'm not being able to leave this building. Starting several weeks ago, and I don't know why it finally soaked in a few days ago, but both the power-operated door systems in the library and town hall here don't work either for ingress or egress. Ingress is say, hey, you can't get in, you know, tough luck. But if I'm here and I was physically handicapped, and the doors don't work to get out, I'd be fearful of my life. So if I were the finesse director, or the township authority, I'd have the heat and GBS, not working with our insurance broker about coverage, and maybe having to go to court on some disaster.
Mr. Mayor, not only CFO and the county manager worries about those things, too. But I don't understand what you're talking about. What?
The doors don't work.
What doors don't work in?
You hit the button and nothing happens.
The entrance.
To get in or to get out.
I tried it myself.
Here and at the library.
But Mr. Not like Mr. Reagan?
I'm going to try it.
You mean the button for the handicap entrance for this door at least? I know that. I tried it. Sorry.
Right, yes. But also the library.
I can go with the door.
So I can't get out tonight because I'm physically handicapped.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Rick's checking it down. We'll look into it. I'm not aware of that. The problem.
Yeah, I can understand. We're in this sphere. We're physically handicapped.
We need to address that.
Yeah, absolutely. We will. Thank you, support.
My name is George. I just want to say to the deputy mayor, I think it's incredibly disingenuous to take documents that were created by any of these citizens and wave them in the air and say, citizens said this. Those flyers weren't made by the citizens. Those flyers were made by pre, and for people who are in support of it from an economic standpoint. Now, let me just, can I just?
Steph Rutter. Steph Rutter. He's a citizen.
These people sitting here? And my point, my, okay, so one citizen wrote a letter, and you're saying that's what the, so Steph Rutter represents everybody in the room?
It's from property tax relief from Moorestown. Everything on here says paid for by tax relief.
Okay, so.
It says property tax.
Is buttressing the value of the commercial side of the tax base, is that tax relief to the residences?
This is.
Is buttressing the commercial side of the tax base, is that tax relief to the residential side?
I'm saying we don't need to.
I'm asking you a question.
I'm not answering. You don't have to take the surplus that we have and have a town hall meeting.
That wasn't the question.
Yeah, we have experience. You don't have to have a town hall meeting to decide how to spend it. I'm saying the surplus we have, which is not just liquor money.
Your interpretation of tax relief is a very broad and very nebulous concept from your standpoint. Is it not tax relief to take the commercial side of the tax base, buttress it and push it up, and create tax relief to the residents? Is that not, is that not a form of tax relief? Well, maybe the mayor can answer that. Is that a form of tax relief?
Our surplus.
Capital improvements, capital improvements.
Okay, so if the citizens said, let's take this and get this liquor license, it's tax relief because the commercial side of the tax base goes up, and that causes savings to residents. How is that not tax relief?
We're not saying that the department, the capital improvements, go forward.
Well, that's not what the deputy mayor's saying. She's saying that money's going to be spent in operations. And as I understand, people already spend a million and a half of it.
It's more tax, that, absolutely, it's tax relief by using some of our surplus.
Yeah, and what happens when the money's gone? Where's the tax relief? People are going to get sticker shock in this town when they see what you guys are doing, that you're using six million dollars that we're getting into this town that we could use to do important things in the town. You're not doing your job by looking at every expense and making sure that you cut them and make sure that people are getting their tax value. But it's an easy decision to take money and throw it at things that it's interesting to you for everyone to tax and spend.
Your money for council, to have a debate.
Well, you seem to like to use the platform of your sitting up there to make your own positions. You added some to the agenda today that should have been given unnoticed in here.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Reddick, 265 North Riding Drive. I was up here last meeting. I just want to say thank you for your attention and resolution to the water update that you all provided. I did receive an email from Mr. Carew. I will take you up on your offer, and I look forward to communicating with Mr. Bill Butler regarding the future operations. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for bringing to our attention that. You know, Bill was on top of it. We heard that.
Sir.
Mike Lobatell, 526 East Main Street. First, congratulations that you have a $6 million surplus, because there's a lot of towns in New Jersey that are closer to bankruptcy than surplus. I understand we have one of the highest bond ratings, if not the highest bond rating in the state. I agree with Deputy Mayor and Mayor and Council on step back and see how things develop before you just have a meeting on, iconically called a monorail meeting. Greg, I'm sorry. I'm a big fan of The Simpsons. There's an episode where they they get together and they have a surplus, and some charlatan comes in and talks me into building a solar panel monorail of all things. We don't need a town hall. Honestly, we don't need a town hall meeting to decide how to run the budget. In fact, that's what everybody here was elected to do. And the fact that you have a surplus, it's evident you're doing a good job of that. There's no doubt about that. There's some big things on the horizon, too. There's a, I was on low mod for two and a half years, and I'm still paying attention to what's happening with COA. And we've got some significant expenses coming down the road with the COA. Our upside could be two, $3 million. I would prefer you guys keep the money in the bank, as you said, for tax relief. And then if you have a well that has to be redrawn, or you have a COA expense that's going to come up, rather than spend it on, I don't know, whatever the town hall expense would be, whatever new toy, rather than that expense, sit on the surplus, and as these expenses occur, we have that money to go to. We have the money in the bank, so to speak. So you don't have to raise my taxes moving forward. And thank you, by the way, for not raising my taxes last year. Mr. George, I don't understand your thinking on this. It's our tax dollars. So if there's a surplus, and they didn't spend the surplus, or spend some of the surplus to offset the taxes, that's exactly what you should do. I don't understand the premise of, oh, we should just go out and use it for pet projects or something. That mindset, to me, is just crazy. So congratulations on the hard work to deliver a surplus. Thank you.
Okay, folks, I don't need to cut it short. Sorry. Go ahead. We're going COA 18, and we got to start right in the meeting. We'll be in our portion where you, we will continue and finish the workshop. Thank you. At this point, we're going to move into our official action meeting. We're starting a moment of silence caused by a 5:06. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and folks, we're going to begin with words by members of, words from members of the council. We'll start with Mr. Newcomer.
Well, first of all, I'd like to report that a remembrance phrasing has been looked out for the David Chantilly Park, which is very simple. In remembrance of David Chantilly, who loved the patch, excuse me, loved this park, remembers of David B. Chantilly, who loved this park and always played with heart, a free spirit, and fairness to all, dedicated in 2015, which is three cent. Secondly, the state of Moorestown, I believe, is cresting going forward and trying to get to their silver. And we have, I think, enough points, and we do have enough points, actually, to get to bronze at this point, but we're working very hard. And lastly, I was invited to attend a award ceremony for a company called Earth Color, who makes 60% of their paper product with wheat waste. It was in North Jersey in precipice. And they received the award for the most sustainable company in New Jersey from the New Jersey Manufacturing Company and from the State of New Jersey. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief. I just have a low mod coming out in the evening tomorrow night. The, how old we bring them up to next meeting.
All right. The times of meeting are where?
7:00, and I presume here, in the venue. Stacy, your question?
Just one, a couple things. Tonight, I just, at the middle of the fire hall, the park convention open house, great job our firefighters do. They do a wonderful job, and they were all there tonight, young and and old, showing off the fire equipment and what they do. So I just want to say thank you to them, the great events. I also attended STEM event, which was the open space festival on Sunday, another great event. STEM has done a spectacular job with that canoeing on the, on the lake fishing contest, and then recognizing the Hess farm and all the things done for Moorestown. That was a wonderful day, and I want to thank STEM for that. And then I did have the privilege of attending a surprise retirement for Cynthia Maznobs, who retired as our fire official. And it was a really nice event. Was happy that I could be there for her.
Victoria?
Well, I also have the opportunity to attend the STEM event in Starbridge Lake Park yesterday. It was a great event, very well attended. The weather was beautiful. And if you haven't had a chance to try the honey from Hess Farm, you have to go and try it. It's phenomenal. And the only other thing I have to report is that the Technology and Telecommunications Committee will be meeting on Wednesday here in Flagbury.
Great, thank you.
The only other thing from, that I'm going to give is, we're moving forward on our, seeking a solution regarding the vacant and abandoned homes in town, convening a mayor's round table with mayors from the surrounding towns, from all parties, you know, Republicans and Democrats alike, to see what other towns are doing to address the issue and to collectively brainstorm on some issues. You know, some of the, in my preliminary discussions, I know there's different tax abadements, there's fines, there's different things other towns are doing to try to handle this problem. Certainly, we're not the worst. You know, our township isn't. Other towns are much worse off than we are when it comes to this, but still, we have a number of homes, and it's, any number of homes, any neighborhoods, any high source are not acceptable. So that's something we're going to look to do. And I hope to have an update for you at the meeting on October 20. And speaking of, we move into upcoming meetings that will be held here at Municipal Complex, 111 West 7th Street, on October 20, 7:00 p.m. workshop, 7:30 p.m. official action. Following me, I have already entered November, number 10. 7:00 p.m. for workshop, 7:30 p.m. official action. Any agenda updates? And if not, I'll take an adoption of the consent of that agenda resolution.
Which would be amended.
Which would be amended.
Send it.
On favor?
Aye.
Abstention or names? Moving to presentation and proclamations. We have two proclamations, one for Cynthia Maznobs, retirement party number two, as Stacy pointed out, and to Barbara Rich, neither are present, so they won't be presented. That is a second reading.
Mr. Mayor, we have one this evening. It is number 14.
My personal privilege, Mr. Mayor, I know there are people who are particularly balked and rich as people who are here tonight. I wonder if it might be read or portioned by, uh, toilet.
Well, a lot is here to hear.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Sorry. My apologies. Cool. Greg. Yes, for Barbara Rich, who couldn't be here tonight. Barbara A. Rich is a longtime resident of Moorestown, has been exceptionally dedicated to the Moorestown community through her irregulable volunteer leadership and participation in environmental, civic, and humanitarian activities. Whereas Barbara A. Rich has given freely, open time and expertise to help preserve and enhance the quality of life in Moorestown and beyond, including, but not limited to, leadership and volunteer service in Environmental Advisory Committee, Open Space Advisory Committee, zoning board, founding member of Save the Environment of Moorestown STEM, ANJAC, which is the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commission, Clean Water Council Subcommittee on Watershed, Watershed Management Area 19 Public Advisory Committee, Land Use Subcommittee, and Non-Pointed Source Committee, Burlington County Open Space Advisory Committee, Burlington County Contact Volunteer, Palm Pensin Creek Watershed Association, Rancoas Conservancy, Pensalkam Creek Watershed, Bridge over the Lower Delaware, New Jersey Commission of Environmental Education and System of the Year 2002. I'm not mistaken, wasn't she on advisory briefly?
She was on advisory.
She was also on advisory. Whereas Barbara A. Rich's knowledge and sincere passion for open space, conservation, preservation, restoration of vegetation, the environment as a whole and the community and state where she lives has been prevalent and recognizable, driving force behind many leadership roles she has taken in all her passes in service. And whereas Barbara A. Rich's dedication and contributions to township of Moorestown has been both commendable and invaluable, hence merits applause. Now therefore, the township of Moorestown and the county of Burlington, New Jersey wishes to honor, thank, and publicly recognize Barbara A. Rich for dedicated service and hope. Proclaim October 6, 2014, data honor Barbara A. Rich. I was going to have her here in person, but you.
On video.
Okay. Going left and left, and stop there. When is this on second reading?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one. It's number 14 dash 2014. In organs amendment chapter 6 dash 45 of the code of test for Moorestown entitled Recreation Advisory Committee by increasing the number of additional student members by, to be appointed by two.
We'll have open public hearing. I'll hear public comment on organs 14 dash 2014. Okay, same note. I will add to your motion to close the public hearing portion.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Council, discussion or motion to adopt the number 14 dash 2014 on second reading?
I'd like to just comment that I want to thank Patty and Teresa for working on this and moving forward, also the Recreation Advisory Committee, as well as the council. as the council.
Great. Is there a motion? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
How do you roll, Paul?
Mr. Mayor, color?
Yes.
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 Deputy Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, folks. Ordinance is for, for, reading their hard non, moving to the consent agenda resolution, which I think will be a motion to amend now. Not too bad. Oh, you did? It was two thousand and...
It's not two thousand and...
Two oh two twenty fourteen. Okay, uh... Yeah, why don't you remember my title?
Okay, uh, first is one ninety-seven dash twenty fourteen, authorizing a second and final one-year extension of a contract to the laboratory in, for laboratory testing in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred and six dollars and fifty cents. Next, we have one ninety-eight dash twenty... Next, we have one ninety-nine dash twenty fourteen, authorizing contract change order number twelve of the town hall library project in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Next is two hundred dash twenty fourteen, authorizing reduction of performance guarantee for Laurel Creek News, hundred and twenty-two residential units, block eighty-seven hundred lots one, twenty-three point zero one and twenty-four. Two thousand and one dash twenty fourteen, authorizing reduction of performance guarantee for Beverly Tranovich subdivision, block fifty-eight hundred, lot twenty-four point oh one, and twenty-two dash twenty fourteen, and... Uh, excuse me, two oh two dash twenty fourteen, and so much kind of a panel...
How would you word that, please?
In addition, uh, express the township's intent to use surplus for tax relief, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, open the floor to public comment on those, uh, pending resolutions. If you have a comment, please come forward, we can just remember.
Hello, my name is Robert Zinek, I live at six two six East Main Street, and I think that as the public is re, and I, I don't object to tax relief for, for, um, surplus money that we have, but as, as each one of us here is required to stick to the agenda, and we're not, you don't permit us to speak unless it's on the agenda, yet you change the agenda with no, without notifying anybody, you vote on it the same night, and Deputy Mayor Jordan professed about being transparent, and I think this is absolutely not transparent. Not to say I wouldn't support it, but I think it should be put out for the other members of Moorestown citizens, because you've cut us down to thirty minutes, because you really don't care what we said.
That's not true.
So now you're cutting us even more by having this slammed into tonight's meeting where people not, can't speak up about it, because...
Are you speaking about it now?
Yes, sir.
You're, you're speaking about it now?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's plenty of people, because I happen to be, I happen to be here, but there's a lot of people that don't know that this is gonna come up tonight, so you, you're talking like, like, it's wrong. My point is that, and I think that it, it just isn't, it goes hypocritically for what she says that, that she's for transparency, and it's not, it's not. And if we're not spending the money, if we're not spending it tonight, so you put it on the agenda for next, next meeting, what's it gonna hurt? And it satisfies everybody here, but no, because you really don't care about doing that.
No, I don't, that's not, that's not the case, Mr. Mayor.
They, they put it off for next month.
You've had, you've had ample time, I was like, I was like...
Put it on for next month.
You've had, you've had ample time in the past year to let us know what you'd like to spend the money on.
You've had ample time to put it on the agenda, too, and you didn't.
It's becoming a political football, and that's what I'm trying to, to stop. People are saying that you should go have a town hall...
Then, then next month, what is the problem with next month?
Mr. Ra, Mr. Ra, 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 Ra,[924.12]
And I've seen other violent depressions along the years. So, and as much as I allow myself certain luxuries or look at what we need, et cetera, et cetera, I really think it's very careful, it's very good to be careful with the money you have and, and keep a lot of it in reserve. We have an aged infrastructure in this town and anything can happen in any part of the town and that can be very costly, but it has to be taken care of. And we're talking about water safety, we're talking about the lake here, which is a resource, you know, in this town, and I'm not for using chemicals. So I think if we go to remedy, you have to go to the remedies that will bring a lot higher improvement and not have the chemicals. My husband only has one kidney. I never knew exactly why this kidney, one kidney needed to be removed. It was seriously infected, it was an abscess he had in there, but I always suspected the water from our well in Bedford, you know? I always suspected that. So I think that one has to be very careful with the money and spend it where you have to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the former chair of the Low and Modern Housing Committee, has worked with safety on that committee, we don't know what the government's going to do, when we get the new code rules. No, it's anybody's guess on what happens, going over and over and over in the past, ten, twenty, thirty years with us. So yes, I agree that we should be putting this into surplus because when the government's controlling of this type of project and this kind of magnitude of how many units could be, but the town's going to be forced to build if that ends up being the case, I think it's best that we look towards putting it into reserve. Thank you.
Pete Palco, six oh one, McKelley. I guess one little comment on the money situation. If my wife was here, she'd be able to spend it really quickly, but she's, she's not here. But in all seriousness, I mean, maybe consider talking to let triggers because as we all know, we just passed forty-three million dollars in capital per my projects that the board event's going to be bonding. And one of those was question two, it's at a five point three million dollar bond in itself. So maybe the township should treat this like a, essentially a four one, a four one hit loan where we lend it to ourselves, lend it to the BOE, earn the interest back, cash days in the township, offsets an expense, or give them a low interest loan. Because whether you guys save the money, you're going to have a tax increase on the BOE side unless we get that under control. So we all just got to start working together. Again, it's really more of a question for Mr. Rochelle because I don't know what the all intricacies of the bonding are, what the durations are, rates, but I'm looking at a five million dollar bond, four percent, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Something to think about depending on how long, you know, the short term. You jump by.
Thanks, Pete. And I, I know for sure that Tom and Lynn talk frequently and I'm sure if one of them has a good idea, the other one knows about it.
Okay, so no more comments? Are you proposing myself or the?
Yeah, Chris doesn't.
Yeah, I'm proposing for a vote. Comment, ask council for a comment. Ask council for a comment or motion to adopt the said agenda of resolutions as amended.
Two comments.
Sure.
One ninety-nine, twenty fourteen is another change order fifty-two thousand, three fifty. I was wondering if we knew an amount that's left in the contingent because of that.
I, 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 Rob and Rick have been at the last couple of meetings and haven't been able to get away with just sitting there. So, so Greg, I will let one of them come up to the table, the microphone, and address any questions with that, with that resolution. That is what they're here for. As exciting as these meetings are, they're here to actually answer any questions in relation to that rather than watch the spectators, so.
Thank you.
Whatever you prefer.
Although the person, you're getting taller there.
The remaining change order contingency, if change order number twelve is approved, is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. So as of this change order, we would use seventy-five point four-three percent of that contingency.
Thank you, Rob.
I did see the two most, uh, two comments.
I did. I had any comment on regards to the two oh two, twenty fourteen. Just wanted to say, we seem to have several different comments here and if we called a town meeting for that, it would be a, we'd have more comments from the votes and actually that's my point, it's not to actually spend the money or have a specific project or just to get some ideas from the folks in town hall. And I see that you're putting on a consent agenda. I do agree, it would be good to do next meeting and I cannot vote for that part of the consent.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll give the motion and do the second.
Second.
I'm sorry.
All one through five, one ninety-seven through two oh one, and no, one two oh two to act twenty fourteen.
Mr. Garwood?
Yes.
Mr. Montana?
Yes.
Mayor Piafio?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Resolutions, uh, who's the mayor? Trying to get out of here fast.
Yeah, we know you're not running, okay.
Wait for the, wait for the several, count the days. Do you get, uh, perhaps you can read by title?
Sure. It's one ninety-six dash twenty fourteen, a resolution of the town of Moorestown, authorizing issuance of one planetary retail consumption license for the sale of alcoholic beverages, Moorestown Beverage One LLC.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Charles is its name and open for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Good evening. Donnie Polinski from Drinkers of the Monkeys. I'm an attorney, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Moorestown Beverage One LLC, for the transfer of a labor license to ultimately be used at the Moorestown law. If you recall, we were here on September eighth and we presented our application at that time. We've now been through the administrative process, we've completed all our paperwork, and we have nothing more to add to our application, but here's my answer to questions that the council, anybody in the public may have of us. And with me also again is Bruce Foulmer, who's the manager of the entity and also the general counsel of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Bestman Trust, and he can answer questions as well.
Okay. Nelson? Is there any questions? I think you can open these today.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's any members of the public that were prepared to ask, uh, the council question, I'll want to tell. Seeing there, I'll close that portion. Okay, are there any motion to close the public hearing portion?
So moved.
Thank you. All favor of closing?
Aye.
Discussion by council or motion to adopt resolution one ninety-six dash twenty fourteen?
Moved to the down.
I will.
Mr. Mayor, come on?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Montana?
Yes.
Are you going to have a vote in this?
Yes.
Yes. Because, um, it's September second, council, one second, council, in twenty fourteen, it says two fourteen, twenty fourteen, council, by my permission, we approve minutes for this, for this, in twenty fourteen.
Three corrections, I believe. It says in the last part that it was advised by the speaker that the lake would need to be dredged. Sorry. Okay, first page, right, last paragraph. It says that by the person who's witness that it was advised that the lake needs to be dredged again, I believe it was reported, did not need to be, or their advice was they believed that it did not need to be dredged again. In another portion of the same discussion, the height of vegetation around the lake was said to be, would be part of their recommendation.
Is that, are you looking at somewhere specific?
Um, I, I found it and I lost it.
Page two, first paragraph.
Okay, go with the page two, first paragraph.
So I'm sorry, what is your comment?
My comment is that it was said that the height of the vegetation around the lake would be part of what was addressed in their recommendations and also presumed high growth, they were going to look for that in their recommendations. But just that the height of it was going to be addressed of the vegetation. And one more. On page ten, it said, Mr. Newcomer was pleased to announce that he celebrated his.
I'm sorry.
Page ten.
Okay, where I hope to say.
Uh, on the second paragraph. It said, Mr. Newcomer was pleased to announce that he celebrated his thirty-fifth wedding anniversary last week. Applause was given, it was thirty-sixth.
I think you said there's a.
I think you did say there's a.
Thank you very much.
All right. Motion to approve minutes as amended.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor, come on?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Montana?
Yes.
Mayor Piafio?
Yeah.
I'm staying out of this meeting and thanks to the WMA for covering. Prove all expenditures, council comment or motion to approve these expenditures as amended or amended. So moved.
Second.
Any more call?
Mr. Mayor, come on?
Yes.
Garwood?
Yes.
Montana?
Yes.
Mayor Piafio?
Yeah.
Yes. Now, continuation of the workshop if necessary, if somebody knows that you have something to add to the workshop, just come forth. I don't know if there's any comments from the public or items listed on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I wanted to bring up one more thing that you asked me to put off a couple of times so that everybody was present when I mess this. Memorial Field's wall has on several occasions in the last, I think, ten months been impacted by the accident or tree fall or so forth. And I would like to put that on the agenda of both the parents committee and the rec committee so that they could go look at possible ways to redesign the wall or look at that in the wall so that they could make it better. And I have the council agree that that would be a way to move forward.
Okay. Council, so as you look, Greg, you would like the, us to task the parents committee and rack with, with the wall, the wall church, the Andrew's Wall, the church for Memorial Field, see if they're able to take any improvements or changes to it.
Well, I mean, with the improvements, does it change the cover of letters?
Well, that would be, that would be up to the committee, actually. But the kinds of things that went on, one was an accident that had to be redone, it was, you know, probably impacted for quite some time for that. And then after that, I was told a tree fell, fell on it and the ball that's on the right was impacted, part of the brick was impacted, the ball that was on the left was impacted and part of the stone wall was impacted. So, I mean, just looking at that, think of the time that the public works folks were already putting to go, putting it back and forth, maybe there's another way to look at it. Maybe there isn't, just looking at the, asking the person, rec, to look at those things seem to be a good idea.
Yeah, but how about this, how about council between now and next meeting, go take a look at the wall and maybe do your homework about the wall and we'll visit this issue at the meeting on the twenty and see if we can, if there's any validity to that request so people can take a look at it.
The only thing I would want to add, Mr. Mayor, council, is talking to Mr. Taylor recently, Mr. Ruttiman, as council is aware, we've got a large project that's currently being designed and engineered and I will double check with Mr. Ruttiman, Mr. Taylor, if they plan on going out for bid. I believe it was sometime going into the winter, so construction could be in the spring. It would make sense if anything was to be done, it would make sense to tie that into this project for economies of scale.
Of course.
So, you know, I, I suppose, you know, in the next six weeks, if council can make that decision and then if it does go to the committees, the committees can get back to Mr. Taylor and Teresa Miller, that would be great.
We'll present a recommendation to the council.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Comes up, it comes down. Okay. A good one, right? Thank you. Okay. Moving back to comments from the public on items listed on the agenda, if you have a comment regarding an item listed on the agenda, please come forth, state your name and address for record.
Paul Conlon, Fort Worth, North Church. I appreciate the council's efforts to go, to, on the, on the water issue. Can I just get a little clarification on that? The, the, the chemical itself is not a regulated chemical, is that correct?
By the D, or the EPA.
So we're, we're looking at it, was that voluntary or was that recommended that we made this?
Yes, yes. It is, there was nothing that we had to do. And, you know, and then, and I, I don't want to be scientist, but I know that there are literally, I guess, thousands of compounds out there that either the EPA or the committee be aware of, but that, that aren't regulated. This is one of those. And so, no, we haven't been told we have to, we were told we were out of compliance, we have been told that we have unsafe drinking water, we have not been told any of these things. We have not been told that we have to take certain steps going forward. What we're trying to do is, is just stay ahead of the curve. Mr. Butler, our, you know, certified water plant operator, is about as serious as you can get about, about your job as, as he is, and his license is, is, you know, a very important part of that. So we've just been trying to stay ahead, we're looking at, at different treatment possibilities.
But if, if, why would the DEP want us to take those wells offline and, and why would they, why would they ask us to take those wells offline?
They didn't ask us to, they recommended that we would. I can tell you that, I can tell you why they recommended overall why they did, you'd have to ask that. What I can say is, is I know that part of their reasoning was because we buy water from New Jersey American Water and because we also have the Kings Highway water pre-plant, both of which had no measurable readings for, for this compound.
I'm sorry, is, isn't the Kings Highway, that's like a backup, is that right?
Well, it's, it's, the North Church wasn't primary, North Church Street was high, high capacity is the primary source that we've been using. We do use Kings Highway from April to about the, yeah, mid-September. So Mr. Butler has put it back online. It does not have the capacity that North Church Street has, but that was measured in, in the readings, it did nothing, there was no measurable level TCP one two three. So I do know one of the EP's thought processes were, we have these other two water sources that can carry our capacity at least for the next six to eight months until we get back into long watering season again. And so that there was no harm to us as a county or no cost to us as a county to shut these things down now.
But isn't New Jersey American like considerably more expensive than?
We're, we're not going to buy any more from them for the time being. We are under contract and this is part of the problem that, that, that I'm glad you raised, Mr. Paolo, because we, we have a contract with New Jersey American Water. Because of DEP's water allocation regulations, we have to, we have to buy more water than we actually need from them, so we might as well use what we're buying. DEP would tell a town it doesn't have enough water and they're still leaving water in the ground, which is, which is our case. We, we, we have a passive water that's pumped, so we won't have to buy any more water from New Jersey.
So what we get from New Jersey American with the back?
We're under contract to purchase from them already, plus Kings Highway will get us through at least in July.
And, and is that Church Street, is that the majority of the township is covered by that, by that?
That is the largest passive in terms of the water, or, or we generate.
And there's no idea how long that's, I mean, what, they recommend that we take it offline, is there any, what, till it's fixed or, I mean, we don't really know how to fix it.
Well, it's, you can't even say until it's fixed, but fixed to what standard? Because there's no standard to fix it to.
Exactly.
So we're looking at different treatment possibilities that will remove the TCP one two three, at least any measurable amounts of it from the source. But we're still, right now, we're in the process of evaluating what those potential options are. My understanding is there's more than one option out there and we're going to have to weigh with our utility engineer and Mr. Butler and see what's the best road to take because at this point it's also, and I think it's a point you're making, it's, it's not just a matter of, of getting it done right and, and the cost, but getting done quickly as well.
Okay, well, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Thanks, Paul.
My name is Robert Zinek, I live at six two six East Main Street. Mr. Carruth, this shutting down the wells had nothing to do with the citizen that brought up this at the last meeting? It was just a coincidence that we decided to do that?
No, it's not, that's, I don't know how you made that leap, no one's had that.
Well, we just closed down a few wells since the individual brought up.
Who's, who, who appears to say that it had one and nothing to do with the other?
No, I'm asking, I'm asking, did, you know, did we close down these wells? We, we were going to do it anyway, we would have done it on our own or would it happen because he brought this up about the report?
They both have to deal with the same report.
Yes.
I, I don't think it's fair to say his coming to the last meeting was the direct cause of the shutting of the wells today. Mr. Butler's been working with the DEP long before last, the last meeting where this gentleman spoke. The DEP as well as our, our utility engineer as well as the town itself has had this report since last November. So why DEP didn't recommend that we shut it down before this past week, you'd have to ask that.
That's the answer to your question. The reason it happened is because DEP provided a report that we built, that's why, that's why. And we, did we make any overtures that, after this gentleman made, just so it's a coincidence that this is happening?
Well, we, we were two separate actions, one, the person who came up and talked to us and the second was, um, we, two separate actions.
Yeah, it just seems like one had to do with the other because the time seems since he brought it up, we closed down the wells. It's definitely curious.
We're, we're actually curious to know why it happens, like it did. And we have some, some ideas, but I don't think we can go all the way through yet.
And it says that we, you said that we monitor it twice a year, but the report says that we monitor August, November, February, and May. You said that we do it twice a year.
No, I, no, I said we, we do it four times, we do, we do it quarterly, we do even more.
I, I saw you said twice, but.
No, we, I said that's what, no, twice is what's recommended, what's, what, and we do it even more.
Right, but we missed our month, late. It says in the report that we missed it, that it was supposed to be done on, by a certain time and we were late.
We do it four times a year, we, we do it four times a year, so it's two times a year.
Because about six, it says the report, if you read the report, it says that we were late.
Okay, we still did it four times, we're, we're, we're supposed to do it too.
Right, the reason. And I just was curious about, how do you feel about the, Ms. Jordan, how does she feel about the, the apartment complex that's asking for more density or to put more units in there?
I haven't, I haven't been part of the, of the thing with words.
Right, but I guess I feel about that because you're for open space and they're going to give you, give.
That's, that's an agenda item.
Sorry. But we spoke about that at the agenda, just, we spoke about the apartment.
Somebody wore an option, yeah, but it's not an agenda item.
So, so, so the public is required to stick to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
But the council is not.
Rule applies to you, it applies to everybody in the room.
But not to you.
I would stand up. Well, someday, when I'm the mayor, that day's coming up, I'm going to come out there, I'm going to have a microphone and when I speak, the rules will apply to me as well.
Well, Chris, Mr. Eric, the rule's applying now and you followed the rules.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Zinek.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jean Alford, I live at five thirty Kings Highway. I have a question. PCP one two three, is that a question, Jen?
PC, PC.
PCP one two three.
My dear.
That's okay.
PC.
PCP one two three.
Okay, is that a question, Jen?
Um, I don't know if the EPA has identified one.
I did about twenty hours of research, so I don't believe that they called it or something. I believe there is a concern about it.
Oh.
There's two different things, but I don't think they called it because they haven't done enough research to actually even know that.
Oh, and what Rick said's true and one of the things I found really great, because I think probably everybody at the table did a ton of research on this after the last meeting. One of the things I found peculiar is EPA's been studying this compound since the, at least the mid-eighties. So the fact that they haven't come up with a minimum contaminant level, which would regulate how much we need to drink the water, after thirty years of study, seems peculiar.
Thank you, man. The residents? Seeing there, we'll close that portion and move to closing conference. Why our council, starting with Victoria.
Well, first, a really quick word about Barbara Rich, because we kicked that proclamation today. Barbara has such an incredible wealth of knowledge about everything related to the natural environment in our town, incredible, and she's been a tremendous resource for me personally, you know, in liaison with the Open Space Committee and so that proclamation was very well served. The last thing I want to say is, is shameless George Leff, it's, it's kind of directly spurred by what he brought up, you know? To say that it's inappropriate to assume that people want it tax-free because that's how the referendum was presented to them, I think is kind of disingenuous considering many people that he would probably consider friends and allies, including his running mate several years ago during a turf debate felt that the open space fund, as it was established in its referendum, you know, the idea there was that that was only supposed to be for the purchasing and maintenance of spaces and not for any other thing there. And that regardless of how the referendum, or the resulting resolution would be interpreted, that it didn't matter because people passed that resolution with the intention that it was for the purchase and the maintenance of plants. And I'm not saying that I disagree with that, in fact, I very much did. And in this case, I believe that because the legal referendums were passed with the intention that they were for tax relief, because I think you crap ten people off the street who voted on that referendum and say, that was for tax relief, that that's what we should use it for. And we could not have a meeting where we would get more people than we had, which was the majority of voters who went to the ballot box and said, I'm voting for this, and we're presuming none of the guys, that they thought they were voting for something that would be used for tax relief. So to say that we're not following the voters, to say that we're not listening to people, I think is absurd.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thanks, Cory.
Tell back to Paul.
Um, I, two, two quick things, I just want to congratulate Sidney Maznoff on her retirement and also to congratulate Barbara Rich on her publication. She is absolutely a convinced deserving person and I'm so happy for her.
Greg?
Um, congrats to Barbara Rich, I've been going to meetings with Barbara Rich for about twenty-two years and Barbara Rich getting this award is a marvelous thing, but I can tell you that Barbara Rich's main idea and probably the reason mostly that she got the award in two thousand and two as a citizen of the year was that she wanted. was that she wanted to protect our water and particularly wanted to make sure there was not too much impervious surface so the water would recharge. That was Barbara Rich's main idea in the environment, although she certainly knew a lot more about the environment than that. And I'm very glad that we did give her the award. In regards to our diverse opinions, I hope we continue to have.
Of course. Phil?
As everyone has said, you can't say too much about Barbara Rich. You know, I, I met her years ago and I got on her advisory, and, you know, she's just been an inspiration always. Her, her wealth of knowledge is great to point out, and Victoria's pointed out, it's just, it is amazing. And just the way that she carries herself and so much, you know, devotion to the town, you just, you can go on and on. So, you know, it's a really, really wonderful thing to give for her. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, it's great to see the faces in the audience. Go have a safe drive home and have a good night.
Thanks, Phil. I'll leave with some briefly remarks. Our water is safe. My kids drink our water. And we're gonna continue to act proactively to make sure, to make sure that it remains safe. And we'll make anything with corrections that are needed down the road to make sure that it's at the safest level possible. With that, we are not going to make quick sessions, I'd say everyone, wish you all a good night, and I'll have to take a motion to adjourn.